I bet I didn't have a threat.
Yeah.
Are we going Cindy?
Yeah, it's on, it's green.
Are we on?
We are live.
Mm-hmm. We are live, okay. It is three fifty-nine and this is the July of the twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five Planning Commission Agenda, or Planning Commission, and I'm calling this meeting to order. First thing we'll do is approve the agenda from the last meeting. If you've had time to read it, I'll take a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the agenda?
I have a motion, uh, motion from Ms. Nettles. Can't say Ms. Laura anymore, we got two of you.
Yes.
I'll second.
All those in, I got a second from Randy, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna move right on to public comments, and I wanna explain a couple things about public comments. I think everybody that's at this table was at, uh, our training session earlier this week, and we asked some very, very good questions. One of the things that we were told, and something that has been happening in county commission meetings and some of the other commission, uh, some of the other committee meetings, is people have a two-minute time limit, and then they say, who'll give me more minutes? Well, we were told that's not proper, so from now on, if you're speak, when your time limit's up, your time limit's up. So I would say, if you plan on speaking, know what you're gonna say, and be clear and concise, and, uh, when your three minutes is up, your three minutes is up. The public comments, of course, can only be to the agenda items. Uh, with that being said, do we have any public comments? Not just wasting my breath, that night. Alright, we're gonna move on, uh, to the approval of the previous minutes.
I make a motion to approve.
Randy Harold makes a motion to approve.
I'm making second.
Ms. Laura Vasquez has the second. Anybody need any more time? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move right on. Kurt, do we have any bonds to review? No bonds to review, okay? We're gonna move on to the major subdivision, construction plans, country landing phase four, Saint John Engineering.
He's on his way.
He's on his way, we're gonna, we're gonna skip him and go to the minor final, fifty-seven eighty-three Kathy Ridge Road for Samuel Kehoe. Is that you?
Randy, you turn on the, yourself.
Nick, turn it on.
There you go. Alright, thank you. How's everyone this evening? So, uh, so what this is, is, uh, Mr. Samuel Kehoe, he owns this property on Kathy Ridge Road, and, um, he had actually, uh, like, if you'll notice, some of these, uh, lots are less than five acres. He is one of the gentlemen who had his, um, application and everything in prior to that change, and, um, and really, it's just taken us this long to get all of our soils stuff worked out on this. Uh, but anyway, um, he's had this property for a number of years, but now he intends to sell it and was gonna divide it and sell it. And so this is what we arrived at. Um, he's got an existing house with existing septic on Lot Two. Uh, Lot One, um, you know, has soils area on it and everything, uh, but Lot Three, you know, is of course over five acres, but we showed it on there anyway, just to show all of his property in one, one shebang and, and get it all divided for him. So anyway, he is, uh, seeking approval on this, and, um, and I can answer any questions that y'all may have on this.
I do have one question. Are you finding that you're not getting the soil samples back as quickly as you used to get them back? I mean, is that taking more time?
Yeah, yeah, and, and people have been reaching out to, um, of course, you know, like, we do a lot of work with Tim Baxter. I mean, he's so covered up that you can't hardly get, I mean, you can't even get a phone call through to him or a text message, so people are reaching out to other scientists that are in like the Fayetteville area, or even, uh, uh, they're, they're Cookeville, you know, they're, they're soil scientists travel now, you know, because they can get work easily if they're just willing to drive, you know? Tim, he's been doing it so long that he just, uh, he just likes to cap it at no more than two hours' drive from the house. That's just his personal preference, and I think he's actually reduced that because he's just getting to the point where he's about ready to pass stuff off to his son and everything, but no, it's, it takes forever to get soil stuff back. From, from the time that you can actually get on their books, of course, you gotta have survey stuff done first, then they come out, and then, um, yeah, it just, it, sometimes it takes a long time to, just to get it back from them, once that they've done the work. And you might've had to wait for them to get there to do the work, and then you gotta wait to get it back from them, and, yeah.
I've had some complaints, and I say that's not our department, you know, I mean, that's, that's beyond our control, so.
Well, they're, they're just all, they're just all covered up, is what it is, so. And, and I know that here, at least in Coffee County, there's been some transition. Um, I'm not sure if, uh, Mr. Charbonneau is retiring, or I'm not sure what his deal is, but there have been some, uh, other folks that have been reviewing the Coffee County stuff here lately. I know Alan's still in there somewhere, but, uh, I know something's going on, because we've had, uh, multiple different people review our plats and so on and stuff.
Thank you, thank you. Any discussion on this?
This was before the five acre?
Yes.
A one come in, I had a question with that, yeah.
Kurt, is everything good about this one? It's in compliance? Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion one way or the other.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion from Mr. Anderson, Sammy Anderson, to, uh, approve this plat?
I'll make a second, I'll make a second.
Ms. Laura seconds it. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Oh, there he is. Thanks, Nick, appreciate it. We're gonna make you sit down, then we'll get you back, okay? Uh, this next one is the major subdivision, construction plans, country landing phase four, Saint John Engineering.
Thank you. As you recall, we brought a preliminary plat through a few months ago on this, and this is, thank you, this is a portion of that preliminary plat. We've kind of broken it into an additional phase, which is Phase Four, that you're seeing here, and that's the middle section. So there is another section that will follow, that's on the upper part of the page to the, really, to the east there. So this is kind of the midsection, so, um, the curls on the property to the east and the west of what is shown here. So it's a continuation of the initial phases that would be on the upper right portion of the page here. So this includes, uh, modification to the existing detention basin to get the connecting roadway that, uh, we discussed in length at the preliminary plat stage, as well as three other detention basins kind of along the drains. And I think Cindy, they are in that enlarged plan that I had emailed to you, but they're all.
C one?
C one, uh, the other two are actually extracted three, C three point, there you go, yes. So these are the grading plans that show the construction of that connecting roadway, the modification of the existing detention basin, and then you'll see a series of dams along the drain that will be up towards the top of the page are the other detention areas that we are creating. So we are managing stormwater, we are, um, constructing roadway along the ridge and creating the lots that are shown here. Think that third PDF Cindy, three, extracted three point two is the other detention area. So that shows kind of in the upper left, um, ours detention basin, kind of the end of the development there. Be glad to answer any questions.
Kurt, you found everything to be good, and our independent, uh, engineer has always also found all this to be good, correct?
Yes, okay.
So Scott says it's good, Kurt says it's good, and our independent engineer, would you tell me what his name is again?
Bob B.
Uh, from Cookeville? Has also looked at this. Any questions? If there are no questions, I won't entertain a motion one way or the other.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Randy Harold to approve. Do I have a second, or is there more discussion first? Anything, Kurt? I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Sammy Anderson. I have a motion to approve, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Scott, I appreciate it. Uh, our last item to be discussed is a request for rezoning A one to C one, one zero zero nine Hoodoo Road. Uh, is this you, Nick, again?
Hey, uh, Nicholas Northcutt, I'm representing the Telefords on this. So they are seeking to rezone, uh, the lot. Yeah, it doesn't have a parcel number on there, but that existing house right there, um, they're wanting to cut the rear portion of this property off, so they are seeking rezoning on this property to the C one in order to do that. We're, um, you know, we're hoping that we are applicable for C one because we feel like it meets the criteria in that it does have fire protection, and, um, it is on a state road. So we're hoping that that, um, helps us meet that requirement for the C one rezoning.
So they're wanting to divide it off to sell it for a house?
They're gonna put a house on it. So they had actually purchased this property back in December with the intentions of doing this, but it has taken a long time to get Mr. Dickerson, uh, to get all of the soils work done necessary to do this. There's like an existing soil site with the house, and so he had, I think, make a return trip to find a secondary area for the house, and, and, and really, that's kind of one of the main holdups on this, was the, was the soil, and one of the reasons they didn't have their application in prior to that.
What about setbacks?
Oh, they'll meet all the setbacks.
It meets all the setbacks.
They'll, yeah, they'll, they'll meet setbacks, they'll meet lot size and area, they'll still be able to do fifty foot to get to it, and, um, yeah, it would otherwise meet all the requirements.
But they're not wanting to put anything commercial there, is that correct?
Uh, no, no, it'd be residential.
It'd still be residential, with it being C one, nothing.
However, if we change it to commercial, they can put something commercial.
That's.
Their intent is to put a home, but let's just make certain. Make, make certain we know that. Is Hoodoo Road a state highway? I know, but I think it qualifies because it's an arterial, right?
It's Highway sixty-four.
Is, oh, is that Highway sixty-four?
Yep. No, two eighty, I'm sorry, two eighty. Two eighty, two eighty, I'm sorry. I was saying Gossperg, but yeah, it's Highway two eighty.
If, if I'm not mistaken, and I don't wanna speak out of turn, I can ask the Telefords, but you already know who's gonna build on it, right?
Quite likely.
Yeah, I mean, um, 'cause I've had that gentleman contact me as well, so if the concern was wanting to prevent anything commercial from going there, um.
Is it, uh?
I only brought that up, Nick, because if we change it to C one, we don't have, we then lose control, but, uh.
But also, that also goes into like a flag lot.
Would be an easement, it'd be.
It's got the fifty foot, but it goes to the back.
Yeah, it's not fee simple. That's correct.
Yeah.
So that little lot would, of course, never be able to be divided after this. But no, that is, by all intentions, that is what they wanna do, is put a house back there.
So you just say that lot behind it could be divided?
Well, no, I said it could never be divided.
Never divided, okay. That's what I was gonna say, I didn't think, but.
You folks realize that this is the first step, and this will still have to go in front of the county commission here aware of that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So they're wanting to just divide the lot to sell that lot, so someone can build a house on it? Okay, but not, it's not like a family member or anything, you know, is it? Is it just a?
Oh, it's, okay, yeah.
Yeah, we don't wanna sell it, we wanna build back there.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay. So they wanna, they wanna divide it, so they can build back there. Probably sell their own home, I guess.
So you wanna build your own home back there, but you want to sell the front lot?
No, you don't wanna do that either, well. Well, that makes it, okay, so they, they just wanna.
Okay, so you're not wanting to sell any of it?
Correct.
They're just wanting to divide it to.
So they're wanting to do it for their own home, and then also keep the older house itself.
So to divide their, to divide their own property, they have to move it to C one, to, to build a house on their own?
If we, if we, if we divide it.
I thought that was just for major subdivisions.
And they go to C one. If they go to C one, if we, if we grant the C one variance, or C one, uh, rezoning, they can do anything that goes into a C one, okay? I mean, it's, uh.
It does, right, and this wouldn't be major.
No, but it's in A one, oh, and it's less than five acres. And you're dividing it.
I know, but I thought that was the stipulations that had to be, if, in A one, but major subdivisions only, is any A one, okay.
Any A one, five acres of this.
Yes, that's what, okay.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
But they're wanting to do it for their own.
Yeah.
And keeping the front section for yourself.
Y'all live in the front section.
But that's our only path to build a house back there, is divide it?
Either that, or you'd have to have fifteen acres or more to put more than one residence.
What? Okay, who bought the place beside it?
Uh, I'm pretty sure the feller who's wanting to build the house for him in the back there, um, wasn't it, it was, uh, Justin Kuhn.
Yes.
He's, uh, you know, Dan Anderson's son-in-law, Dan and Kelly Anderson's son-in-law.
'Cause I knew that that place was originally a lot bigger, and I knew the one section, that, the one section there, that eighteen oh five, got divided off of it.
Yeah, they're building a house on it now.
Right, and they're building a house on it already. And that was before the five acres went into effect.
That's correct.
And then the other side, over there right past it, also went to a region with.
You're, you're correct.
We're dealing, remember now, folks, we're dealing with this one lot.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, I was just trying to think.
This one lot.
Yeah, well, I was just thinking, no, if it had more land that could go with it or something.
Any more questions, discussion? I know I'm seeing some puzzled faces here.
Well, I'm just puzzled because I know that once we start rezoning from A one to commercial, I think it's gonna be a pattern.
It'll open up.
But now the C one doesn't stand for commercial though, right, it's community.
It's convert, it's convert.
Rural Center District, like the Hill or, or Beach Grove, or, uh.
But they could build commercial though, only correct.
C one is mixed use.
It's mixed use.
Right, you can go to C one commercial, you can go back to residential.
You might be able to build a Dollar General on it, but that's about, I mean, you're talking about one seven-tenth, is that one seven-tenths, is that right?
That's not a point.
Yes.
I'm talking about both of them together.
Cause one was point eight, one was point nine, so, yeah. Just spitballing, you know, y'all could make minors allowable now without having to have variances, just throwing that out there.
Did you discuss with your clients the possibility going before the BZA?
Um, well, this wouldn't apply for, I mean, what, what, for like a variance, you mean?
To minus seven?
Um, no, no, I didn't think this would, I didn't think a variance would apply to a new lot, but only lots of record.
We're working our way through that.
Or that's how it's been done, I guess.
Yeah. That's, uh, the minor subdivision, if you, if you remember reading Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh five, where we stipulated minimum lot size in the A one district would now be five acres. But another sentence followed that, that says minor subdivisions may be granted by variance. And, uh, and there's already the BZA, we're next meeting, gonna have to deal with, I think, a few of those.
Five of them for me, anyway.
Do what?
Five of them for me, anyway, so.
So I wondered why you didn't talk to them about that, I guess.
Well, in, in their case, they had already.
Back in one and done, in other words, it's a BZA grant, if you're done. This one is a two-step, as our chairman explained.
Well, that may be a pathway that they have to take if the commission decides to not vote this to a C one.
More questions, more discussion? Will anybody wanna make a motion? Anybody wanna feel froggy and jumped?
I make a motion to decline.
I have a motion from Randy Harold to decline. Do I have a second to that motion? Any more discussion on that before we, before I ask for a second?
Can I ask why you would?
You really need a second before you open discussion.
I, I'll second for discussion.
Okay.
Um, go ahead, Nick.
Can I ask why you would want to decline that, knowing what you know about it?
Because it's, uh, starting to open up a door from A one to C one, and it's less, less than five acres. And our, uh, regulations specify, you can't do it less than five acres in A one.
But now, weren't there supposed to be two pathways? One was rezoning, and the other was through variance.
Is that right?
Neither guaranteed.
Right, yeah.
I, I personally don't have a problem with them building on their own property and, and building and dividing it and doing that. I, I don't have, I think it's the whole change in the rezoning of it to, but just because of what, what it's gonna do. But I honestly, I think.
You see where people, you see the situation people are in now, though, right?
I s, I see, I, I kind of agree with what I would do with, with what Dennis said. I would have definitely, definitely go to BZA and. I think that would, that would probably fix the problem.
Anybody else? Well, I, I'm gonna weigh in just a little bit, I, Dennis knows that I feel this way. I, I'm not crazy about the variance, I'm not, I'm not crazy about that, I've only found one definition of variance. And, uh, and I can't see where it applies if you just wanna split lots up, okay? Uh, I think rezoning is better. I think we've made the statement in this meeting before that we needed to come up with conditions and reasons to do this, and we have asked people to be patient and wait, and I think I've had that repeated to me about twenty times. I really don't care, because that's what needs to happen, I think we need to get, get some stuff done. We're gonna talk a little, about a little bit of stuff, some of it I think you'll like, af, at, at the end of this meeting. We can't vote on anything, but we will be at the next meeting. That being said, we hadn't changed our position at all. Uh, I have a motion to decline, and a second. Do I have any more discussion? You ready to vote? All those in favor of declining this rezoning, say aye. Oppose? Alright, now, do I need to, after our training class the other day, do I might need to make an affirmative? Motion, somebody making a firm motion on this, Dennis? No? Okay. Alright.
When, when, when the motion is made to approve, and you get all the no votes, you essentially declined, but the technical aspect that we've been pointed out by our training trainer is, you ought to put it back for a vote to decline.
Right.
That's why.
Oh, yes, that way.
So this motion to decline was approved. Now, if you'd have got a bunch of no votes to decline, then you would've probably wanted to brought it back as an affirmative.
Just making sure we had it straight.
Yeah.
Just making sure we had it straight.
Where she was talking about, you wanted to end in all yeses, in that way, like you say, bring it back.
You still have another pathway to go, and I wouldn't give up on this yet.
Well, you're not done, you have the option now to move forward to the full legislative part, which may very well approve it.
Right.
Um, well, so they've paid their fee already, so, you know, we're likely to, to try that avenue, but, um, if that is the case, that they are declined with the full commission, you know, when we go before the BZA, can we say that we are here seeking a variance upon the recommendation of the Planning Commission?
We gotta work our way through that, you know, there's some semantics in the word variance. Uh, it's, uh, TCA has, uh, and our planner, variance has a singular meaning. I don't think it does, that's my opinion, but it's the opinion of our planner and the TCA, and our chairman, as far as that goes, that variance has a singular meaning. It variance has a singular meaning when it comes to planning and zoning. So, having said that, there's a very good chance, I know the B Z A has three distinct powers that are in our zoning resolution. T C A adds a fourth that says, and I'm gonna have to paraphrase unless Cindy has my email in front of her, that says, "Or to answer special questions authorized by the zoning ordinance." We have allowed the B Z A the ability to answer a special question in our ordinance or resolution, and those are synonymous terms. Now, having said that, we use the word variance as opposed to the two words, "special question." So there's a real good chance we have to go back and amend and edit that zoning resolution amendment that says minor subdivision may be granted by variance, and have to reword it and say minor subdivisions may be granted by special question to be technically compliant with the specific language of Tennessee code annotated. Now, that comes from our professional planner. So we do, we do have a little work, and I'm just hoping everybody will bear with us. But I do like the B Z A addressing this stuff right here myself, I really do.
Minor divisions?
Yes, minor subdivisions, yeah.
I don't think, I don't think anybody disagrees with that, as long as we can get through the wordings and make sure everything's all the up and up on it.
But right now, I think you guys need to go on to the full commission with this one. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, alright, alright, thank y'all for your time.
Which you would've had to have done anyway, even if you'd have got an affirmative, you would've still had to go before the full legislative body.
Yeah, this is just positive or negative recommendation.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, moving right along, thank y'all for your input. Randy, Laura, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we're going to go into discussion now. Uh, did, have all of you had a chance to read what Amanda did with the family variances?
Mm-hmm.
Did you get a chance to read that, Laura?
No.
Okay, I did, did get it to you, right?
I don't know.
Like you hadn't had anything else to do.
Did you email it to me?
Mm-hmm.
Then did you do?
It's been a couple of months ago, hasn't it? Two months.
Okay, maybe I did read it.
I think it's two months ago.
Okay, oh. Yeah, I did read that.
Okay. Uh, to me, that's one of the most important things that we need to do with the five acres, is allow for a family variance.
Mm-hmm.
Well, okay.
Uh, we can't vote on anything today, but we can discuss it, and we'll discuss it again at the next meeting, and we will vote on it the next meeting. That will get in front of the county commission at your October meeting, correct, Dennis?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I like Amanda's, uh, wording. It's not indicative to Coffee County. And as we discussed with her, I don't think, I, there's some things that I don't like, I don't like the twenty-five years before you can sell it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I do like the fact that there are other reasons that you can sell that piece of property. Uh, the, the family variance I'm talking. Uh, I think two would be enough for us. Uh, but if you guys still have that, really study that, and if, I think we should ask her, what do y'all think about the years? Rodney said ten years, several people said five to seven. Uh, Mayor, have you got, uh, I think, I think you think-
We need to come up with a five-five-five.
What's that?
We need to come up with a five-five-five concept.
And what's that?
Five acres, five years, and five splits off a parent parcel, that's just my, I'm just throwing that out.
Off a parent parcel?
Off the parent parcel.
So if you've got twenty acres.
If you've got five kids is what I'm saying.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm saying, you got twenty acres, you can divide it off five times. Four acres a piece, but then it, you gotta hold it for five years. So that's what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, but time.
Yeah.
We're already at five acres, you could done put-
And it does say, it does say immediate family.
Right, well, can we also in that, to help eliminate some of this, if you're gonna, just like the one we were just talking about, if you're gonna split it up and keep it yourself, and keep the front, and, and build on the back, and you keep the front, can we add that in to where we could divide that up, allow them to divide it, but then they can't sell it for five years, same thing? But it's for individual, for your self-usage.
I guess if everybody thought the same way, that would be okay.
See what I'm saying, that, that's just like theirs, if you divide it up in the back, they could, they could, they could have proved it under that condition, we could approve, approve it, but also it has the five years on to it, so they can't turn around and say, okay, six months down the road, well, we're gonna sell the front.
Well, we discussed that at this, at the table with Amanda.
Mm-hmm.
Is, you can, I think Rodney's the one that brought it up, you can sell an acre, and then you can't sell another acre for five years, which would eliminate, you know, eliminate some, I think it would be better than just giving up on the five acres altogether.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm talking about, on their case though, they're not, they're, right now, they're not selling either one. But they're wanting to divide it to get the five, to, to build on the back. But then, what, like I said, what's keeping them from selling the front?
Well, and-
Down the road.
The simple fact of the matter is, is if you'd have, if you rezoned something to C one, you have no control. We would have no control over what happens on that property-
Right.
As long as it was under the C one uses.
Right, but I'm talking about, that way it wouldn't have to be zoned C one.
It could, that's, that's something that-
That's what I'm talking about, say, they could divide it, but it not be zoned C one, but say, okay, I mean, yeah, C one, say, okay, I wanna build on the back, but I wanna keep the front. As long as they do that, and let make it like a five year, just like the family, that way they can't build on the back and turn around and sell it.
Actually, they wouldn't have to split it up until they got ready to sell it, correct?
And the property still-
Right, that's what I couldn't figure out, why are they splitting it up? To build, to build, well, yeah, I know, I do know too, yeah.
But those are questions that we need to think about and need to make some decisions on at our next meeting, we need to vote, and we need to get whatever the mayor thinks he can get in front of the county commission. Uh, and, and I think Sammy, you were one of the ones that said, don't give us too much at one time, and, because you got a lot of other stuff besides it. So, uh, anyway, uh.
I think I was thinking when we, when we were doing the, when we were divided up in the A ones that, cause that question had come up, if you have, um, ten acres, whatever, and you wanted to cut out an acre for your kid, then I, I, I thought we discussed that they could do that, that, that was a variance that they could do. They didn't have to have it rezoned or anything, they could do-
I agree, but it's not in there.
It's not in there, it's also, we can't give variances.
We talked about it, but we ain't got it in, in language yet.
But we didn't vote, vote on that?
No, and that's just like that case right there, we didn't vote on that.
Do you remember? Yes, I remember this, the discussion.
Oh, we had the discussion, uh, it gets down to what we, Sammy and I just were talking about, you can't put too much, not that our commissioners aren't great, but you just can't put too much.
Yeah.
They got a lot to absorb besides planning.
I, I guess I thought that that was, that was in there.
That's a good statement, Mayor.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's why I suggested just a straight variance, it don't matter if you're giving it to your kid or you're selling it to somebody in New York. That was my opinion, you grant the variance.
Grant the variance, right.
We need to use a different word, I, I, I can't, I can't deal with variance, I, I just, uh.
Well, that's what it is, the definition, variation, you're, you got this over here and you wanna do something different, you vary. That's why I say it's only got a singular definition in regards to land use.
Inland use is only has one definition.
That's right, so, uh, it, it probably got misplaced in there, but we're gonna work on it.
And even if they-
I feel like y'all gotta work on it.
Even if they wanted to sell the house in front, maybe they need to sell it to help pay for build that, when I, I can see-
Absolutely.
Selling that, I mean, it's just, it ain't, it's just a lot, it's just a lot.
The thing is though, they're already less than five acres.
Mm-hmm.
And then they divided it off, and then if you go to C, C one, like you said, I mean, that's gonna open a door.
Well, I ain't saying changing it to C one, I ain't, I ain't, I'm just saying, like you-
Keep it in A one.
To leave it in A one.
Yeah, leave it in A one.
Mm.
See, my opinion was, when you go before the board of zoning appeals, to ask for this minor subdivision, that would be one of the reasons. I'm, here's my kid.
That is, that is a reason.
Right, oh, yeah.
You get, you get the variance.
I like the idea that you were talking about the five-five-five.
Yeah.
Five acres, five kids, and then five years.
And in our defense, people say, why didn't you work all this out when you was doing the five acres? Okay, we had to see if that passed.
Right.
Then we get to work on the details. Had, had that not re- made the required minimum votes at the full legislative body, all of this discussion would've been just wasted breath. So we got the big decision made, A one is now protected by minimum lot sizes of five acres.
Right.
Now, we gotta go to work on how can we bend that when it needs to be bent.
Right.
It don't need to be bent all the time.
No, and where there's a need, I have no problem-
Right.
With a variance. But we're taught, we were taught, we were told Tuesday, or whatever day that-
Friday.
Yeah, Friday, God, it's been that short a time ago. I remember it worse than I thought.
It was Friday.
Uh, and everything that you look at says to, to do something for more money or economic gain, it's not a variance.
Right.
I mean, how many times did we hear that?
Can't be approved, is what they say.
That's right.
Right.
So-
But like I said, I like-
That's what we're trying to work out right now.
Like I said, I like the idea, like you said, I mean, cause, you know, we were talking about, it was brought up about two kids. And so, I mean, a lot of people's got more than two kids. Uh, the five-five-five, in my opinion, sounds like a good compromise. You got five kids, you can divide it off five times, but you gotta have it held up for five years. They can build on it, live on it, but you can't sell it for five years. And I think that would be a good, something good to look at.
I, I like that also, uh, I, I do like what Amanda put in there about there are certain things. I don't think she mentioned divorce, but she did mention death, she did mention, uh, uh, foreclosure, bankruptcy, and all those things. Things that legally force you to do that, other than what you wanna do.
Right.
You saying, Amanda put in there, did she, uh, did she indicate she authored that herself?
No, it's, I think it came from Williamson County.
Yeah, that's why I, I didn't want you attributing that to her.
No, I did, I didn't mean to. Let's put it that way, she sent that to me. And I sent it to y'all, so I didn't author it either, so let's make it clear. Uh, the other thing that, uh-
I encourage everybody to write notes down before the next meeting, that you'll think about all the stuff that you think would, uh, need to be addressed, you know, and, and remember the sub, the, the zoning resolution is, uh, different from the subdivision regulations. See, right now, this minimum lot size is a function of the zoning resolution.
Resolution, which is-
And to change any lot size or, um, let what, what you just didn't do today, that's zoning, it's all within the zoning regulations, so everybody gotta look at it from that aspect.
You could, one thing I was talking about, you was talking about divorce, foreclosure. I just got a question, I go being, like I said, making notes, I'm thinking ahead here. Uh, put also in there besides the five-five-five, put hardships.
Well, it's, it, she will write that in there, she's got a good paragraph in it.
That's what I'm saying, put like, hard, you know, divorce, foreclosure.
Well, I've said multiple times, sitting at this planning commission table, we're not in the marriage counselor business. We're not in financial advice
Right.
Business, we're in land use business. You only look at the use of the land and what's the proper use of the land.
Yeah.
All that other stuff, I, I think it just misplaced really.
Cause that kinda, if the question is, if it did go through, let's say hardship, divorce, whatever, and they sold it a year after they built it, then that pretty well wipes out that holding altogether, don't it? Wouldn't it?
Well, I'm, me personally, I'm just putting the five-year limit on how many times the parent parcel can be subdivided. And if it's, if it, the kid don't like it there or something, I wouldn't restrict them from selling it. I mean, I don't know why you would restrict, uh, disposing.
Okay, what was the five-five-five you were talking about then?
Five years, we already got five acres.
Right.
The parent parcel could only be split five times within a five-year period.
Oh, okay, okay, I didn't-
That was just what I was saying.
I didn't hear you say the five-year period, I thought you was talking about keeping, cause we were talking about what Rodney had talked about, the years holding, and that's what I thought. Yeah.
Right.
Okay, I see what you're saying now.
I don't see, I just don't see restricting people, making them keep a piece of property. Yeah, I just don't think, I just think that would be unconstitutional. If they own it, they ought to be able to sell it.
No, that's where I misunderstood, you were talking about the five, we was talking about Rodney, I thought you was talking about, uh, holding it for five years, what you're saying, that is-
Five divisions.
Right, in five-year period.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and what I'm counting is, that's four parcels with the parent.
With the parent parcel.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Four other, four other-
Divide it up into five sections, yeah.
I'm trying to find something here, but evidently I must have erased it, it's notes I made.
But as Amanda pointed out, and we've discussed tonight, I think the very next thing that needs to happen is the language in our amendment needs to be changed, or, or we change the definition of variance in our zoning resolution.
Well, that's one way to go, if you change it to special exception or special question.
You could say variance is synonymous with special question.
And we have-
Have that in your definition.
And we have lists of those already in the back, or general list in the back of the book for that.
Of definitions, is that what you're saying?
No, of what, what questions that you can ask, what, what conditions that you have.
Yeah.
We have general ones, and we need to come up with some specific ones at our next, and those conditions are back here in the back under, well, there's a lot of different topics, but there, each one has a different set of conditions. And there is something that we were looking at. Maybe we should not go into the subdivision regulations yet, until we get this through the, till we get this through the, uh, full commission.
Everybody gets confused, you know, you're dealing one another, one another, I think of the zoning resolution, minimum lot size and minor subdivision, the ability to do minors. Uh, the, uh, our subdivision regulations is the one that defines subdivisions.
That's right.
Uh, that's, you know-
And we do that, we can do that in the planning commission. And we do that, we can do that in the planning commission, but we still have to have thirty days notice. I think that, I think she made that very blunt.
Yeah, I'd like to see, whatever you're gonna do with the zoning resolution, try to get that worked out first so it can be, uh, took to the full legislative body at the next meeting. And there's quite a bit of time between now and October.
When we were talking about a special, uh, special call meeting, but we really don't need one because our next regular meeting will be in plenty of time to get, uh, notice to the, before the full commission. That's yours is in-
If you got, if you got your worked out, what you're gonna do, you know?
The next meeting, yeah. Next meeting.
Going out, going out stuff, it need to be put into words and resolution form.
You want Mark to do that, or do you want?
We can do Mark or Amanda.
Okay, well, that's up to you. You're, you're, you're writing the check for it, so.
I'll see who can do it the quickest.
Yeah, cause we gotta get it, that way we can get, uh,
Anything else?
any paper and stuff, so.
Did you get everything down? Laura, we're counting on you to have everything down.
Huh? And you got everything? Alright.
Anything else? Anybody got anything, Mayor?
Just for the sake of public, uh, the last Friday, the last Thursday, the scheduled board of zoning appeals meeting was postponed because the very next day, Friday, we had training scheduled. And I felt like with a couple, three new members on the board of zoning appeals, and even the five, uh, veteran, if you, the veterans that are on it, I would say were dealing with some new territory. So, I felt like the training session, which was a eight-hour training session, the, the board of zoning appeals members, I think, stayed the first four hours for their minimum required, correct? All of them was there, right? I did not attend because I knew I would, uh, probably be chiming in where I shouldn't, so I was letting my professional planner do her thing. And then the afternoon training session was the planning commission subject. And not everybody was able to stay that afternoon, but, uh, I think three of you did, and we appreciate it.
She also sent us, uh, and you emailed it out to everybody, her PowerPoint.
Right.
She did have that.
She, she, she gave that to us.
I think every, all members of both the board of zoning appeals and the planning commission had high marks for our new planner.
And everybody on the board of zoning appeals, including the alternate, and all the planning commission members and all the staff, including Devin, attended those meetings.
Yes.
And I thought that was excellent.
Yes, and I thank you guys for it.
Yeah, I think she did a very excellent job.
Yeah.
I do.
And I liked having it right here.
Yeah.
I liked it.
That way you can hear.
Hey, I, I just liked this room better than that big room.
Well, and, and we had more discussion-
Right.
Yeah.
And stuff too, and it felt like everybody was more at ease here.
Has anybody got anything else? Because if we don't, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn, and Sammy just can't hardly wait.
That's his, that's his, that's his motion, yeah. And I'll second it.
I've got a motion and a second. If you agree with it, stand up and leave. If you sit in your seat, you can stay here by yourself.